Link that's all Try to be worthy of Shobinu sentenai[22.24][28.92](music)[29.42][29.42](music)
Om Saravamangalaya Mangalya Varanyamu Varagam Sukhan Om Namum Bhagavate Shri Aravindaya Om Namum Bhagavate Shri Aravindaya
Nama Naya Vareyum, Life Divine Payilvatharkaha Indha Kuneyatthalathin Moolam Orunganaithe Indha Nalla Vaipinai Namakkum Arliyulabahavanakkum Sri Annayakkum Namadhanriyayum Vanakkatiyum Avargalathu Porpaadangali Samarpipoom Ittaranathil Nammanadilyerum Ovoriennatayum Inghidhanapesum Ovorwarthyayum Avargalakku Kaanakkiyaha Samarpipoom Anivarakum Iniyam Maalivannakkum Nam Da Savai Kerumaidhovrum Life Divine Book Number One Adil Madhalilirundu Parthukondu Vareykinro Adil Thappodudhanam Parthukondiruppadu Chapter Four Reality Omnipresent That is Thappodudhanam Parthukondirukinro Ponna Sessionla Paragraph Four, Five and Six Iray Parthoom Indha Sessionla Meerkundu Thodaralaam Adarka Munner Ponna Sessionla Enna Parthoomandathai Satri Nenayivukkuralam Indha Chapter Nodiyaya Talayipu Reality Omnipresent Bhavan Indha Talaypilayay Bhavan Oratham Podindullathalayipai Orangyulaa Omnipresent Reality Enr Solallam Adarka Badilaka Bhavan Reality Omnipresent Enr Korukindra Indha Irundu Vahyana Warthy Amaypugalikkum Satri Vitthiasamirikindradu Omnipresent Reality Enr Solvadhe Iveda Reality Omnipresent Enr Sollumbodhu Andha Oratham Inghu Tharapadikindradu Reality Maymay Enbadarkum Oratham Tharapadikindradu Omnipresent Engum Vyabithulladu Enginra Warthikkum Oratham Tharapadikindradu Adhalaal Thand Bhavan Reality Omnipresent Enr Talayipittullar Evvaru The Life Divine Enr Talayipittaro Adhee Poole Indha Chapterakkum Bhavan Reality Omnipresent Enr Talayipittullar Engum Nirayindulla Maymay Adarka Badilaka Maymay Engum Nirayindulladu That is Or Affirmative Statement Indha Indha Engum Nirayindulla Maymay Enr Unmai Orvararidukondal Avar Kaanum Vishayangali Indha Prabanjathil Avarke Edumay Vande Muranpaadaahave Tereyadu The Muranpaadu Nam Indha Book Two Lakoda The Divine Undivine Enr Talaypil Parthukondu Vareykinro Andheyum Bhavan Ennakorukindrar The Muranpaadu Enbadhe Illai Enbadu Thand Bhavan Nodiyavada The Muranpaadu Enbadhe Illai Enbadu Evvaru Orvar Anubhopurumaga Unaramudimanral Avar Engum Nirayindulla Engum Vyabithulladu Andha Paramborul Adai Andha Anubhoti Orvar Ettiyapinnar Thand Avar Muranpaadugale Edhile Meekaanamudiyadu Ellaame Andha Iray Maymay Thand Maymay Agathan Avar Unarva The Muranpaadugale Pettrupesumbodhu Aamikathil Orvar Uchakattanilayana Andha Ellaam Kadanda Nilailirukkukoodiyanda Brahman Andha Nilaiyadindha Pinnar Andha Pure Self Andha Silent Brahman Inactive Brahman Transcendent Silence Sella Anithim Kadanda Orumavnam Enginra Nilaiyavare Ettikindra Ettipinnan Andhu Ulaham Andha Prabanjam Elam Oru Unmayatanmai Attradaha Avaral Kaanappadikindradu Or Paagbadainga Undagindradu Ennapaga Badaenral The Ellaam Kadanda Nilailirukkukoodiyadha Paramborul Brahman Adarkum Indha Prabanjathil Thannai Velipadutti Kondirikkum Brahman Brahman in Manifestation Idarkum Orum Muranpaadu Yerpadikindradu Muranpaadu Andha Oruchakattanilayaudan Ettiyaudan Andha Yogikke The Muranpaadu Thondakindradu Ananal Unmai Anal Unmaileye Muranpaadu Irkindradu Thayenral Illai Shiarabindho Ennakorukindar Enral Indha Silent and Inactive Brahman Ellaam Kadanda Nilailirukkukoodiyanda Brahman Adarkum The Brahman in Manifestation In the Lower Plane The Cosmic Consciousness Prabanjam Tharuvya Prabanjam Alaviyaneleelirikkum Andha Brahmanakkum Edayil Muranpaadu Illai Unmaileye Enna Irkindradu Enral Ivarirandakkum Edayil Oruttisayvudan Irkindradu Enr Shiarabindho Korukindra Ahayal Avar Ennakorukindrar Indha Silent and Active Brahman They are not different Ivarirandum Veveerana Amaypugal Thedayadu Adhee Poole Edhiradhirana Nilailirikkum Amaypugaloo Utthisayvya Adayamudiyadu Amaypugaloo Thedayadu Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Brahmaninodiyay Irundu Amssangal Thand Ellaam Kadanda Nilailiruppadum Inghu Engum Vyabiththirikkum Amayp Amssamum Veerandamssam Thand Brahmanaga Irkindradu Onray Nam Neermariyana Amayp Enreduttukondal Machtrunru Edhiramariyaha Amaypaha Irundhalum Ivarirandamey Onray Onru Adarik Adarik Adarikkum Vannam Thand Irkindran Ennakaranaminral Edainam Indha Poorunamavnam Silence Enr Korukindromo Adililirundu Thand Anithame Oruvaagikindradu The Murrumudar Porula Warthayana Om Enginra Warthayum Adil Thand Oruvaagikindradu Adililirundu Thand Ulahangal Anithame Oruvaagikindradu Ahayal Indha Silence Enbadu Inghu Kaanappadam Ulaham Prabanjam Ivargalakke Edhura Amaypuk Thedayadu Indha Brahmaninodiyay Oru Nilay Ennavanral Ellaam Kadanda Nilailadu Oru Saasodamana Oru Silent Nilailirikkindradu Eternal Passivity Indha Eternal Passivity Adavi Eppodumay Saasodamana Oru Silent Nilailiruppadu Eternal Passivity Adu Thand Andha Brahmanakkku Or Pooruna Sudandritte Varangikindradu Ellaasakthayum Andha Eternal Passivity Adu Edarka Varangu Varangukindradu Enral Inghu Prabanjathil Eppodumay Nadeypettukondirikkum Iyakangalakkum Varangikindradu The Eternal Passivity Is that which makes possible all eternal Divine Activity in this world Ahayal Eternal Passivity Enbadu The Eternal Activity Seyalbaadugalekke Adu Thand Karanamaga Irkindradu Meelum Indha Brahmaninodiyay Nilayhal Ivargalayalam Ivargalay Nam Edhiradhiraha Karathikindromo Marthamadayadan Nilay Immute Akshara Changeless and Change Indha Nilayhalum Edhuraana Nilayhal Thedayadu Edu Marthamadayadan Nilailirikkindradu Adu Thand Marthamadayam Nilayhalay Adaritthu Adu Thand Tangi Nickindradu Indha Brahman Indha Ulahathil Seyalbon Amaypaha Iruppadu Thannudiyay Sakthayum Tiranayum Andha immutable State Adiliruppadu Thand Perukindradu Adhee Poole The immutable Brahman lends its impartial support to mutable Brahman Enr Shiarabindho Korukindra Immutable Brahman lends its impartial support to mutable Brahman Ahayala Indha Irundamay Edhiradhirana Amaypugal Thedayadu Anithirkum Pinnal Iruppadu Oreay Maymay Thand There is one reality Indha Prabanjam Tharuvya Amaypuk Pinnar Iruppadum Oreay Maymay Thand Iray Maymay Thand Ellaam Kadanda Nilailirukkukoodiyanda Transcendent State Adiliruppadum Oreay Maymay Thand Ivarirandakkum Edayil Oru Conflict Moran Enbadu Thedayadu Utthisayvudan Irkindradu Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Adhee Poole Manidhanayetukondalum Kodha Manidhanenbavan Seyalbatthaavendu The Seyalbaadu Enbadu Manidhanakkum Inriyamayadha Inriyamayadathaha Irkindradu Avar Vaarum Marikka Edo Oru Seyalbaatil Thannai Eedupadutti Kondradan Agavendyakattayathil Irkindra Veerum Seyalbaadugal Matthiramay Oru Manidhanay Murrumayadaya Sayikindradha Enral Illai Bhavan Ennakorukindar Enral Veerum Seyalbaadugal Matthiramay Oru Manidhanay Murrumayadaya Sayvadillai Andha Seyalbaadugalukkoode Manidhan Thannul Oru Amediyayum Andha Brahmaninodiyandha Passivity Calm and Passivity of the Brahman Adai Endha Manidhan Thannul Kondullanoo Appodudhu Thand Avarudiyay Velipura Seyalbaadugal Migasirappanadaha Amayam Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Agave Bhavaninga Ennakorukindar Enral Indha Prabanjathilavande Edu Vande Eppodumay Oru Oru Thodrachyana Edayvadaadha Sakthay Varangi Kondirikkindradu Indha Prabanjathil Edu Edayvadaadha Thodrachyaha Oru Sakthay Varangi Kondirikkindradu Enral Indha Calm Within Ullarandhi Irkkum Andha Amaydithan Velipura Nadeyadikigalakkus Sakthay Varangi Kondirikkindradu Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Ahayal Bhavanirudiyaha Ennakorukindrar Indha Silence Enbadu Mavnattil Iruppadu Enbadu It is not the rejection of cosmic activity Prabanjathil Seyalbaadugalekke Edhuraana Nilay Thedayadu Prabanjathil Seyalbaadugalei Indha Mavnattil Iruppadu Enbadu Vilakkavadi Illai Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Indha Silence and Activity Ivarirandamey Edhiradhirana Porundadaan Nilaygalil Vaitthupapadu Nam Manadhinodiyapiray Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Ennakaranaminral Manam Ennasaikindradu Eppodumay Irundu Vishayangali Muranpadutti Onray Eetrukonru Machtrunray Maruthum Thand Adu Vishayangali Parkindradu Oru Monailirundu Maru Monike Adu Thavukindradu Manidhanodiyam Manadhirkku Or Comprehensive Consciousness Thedayadu Anithim Tharuvya Oru Unaruv Nilay Thedayadu Adral Thandadu Andha Mavnam Adayorugurumum Activity Enbadu Maru Gurumum Irundu Nilayhalaga Adu Parkindradu Ahayal Bhavaninga Koruvadhe Ennavanral Indha Silence and Brahmaninodiyandha Nilayum Indha Seyalbadum Indha Ulaham Ivarirandamey Vande Edhiradhirana Nilayhal Thedayadu Indha Seyalbaadugalakke Pinnalirukkukoodiyay Oru Amaydi Adu Thand Seyalbaadugalei Adaritthu Tangi Nickindradu Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Meelum Avar Ennakorukindrar The Edhiradhirana Nilayhal Amaypugal Enr Kurumbodhu Innoor Vahyana Edhuraana Nilayal Eppadi Indha Silence and Activity Transcendent Brahman Cosmic Brahman Ivargalayalam Nam Edhiradhirana Nilaygalayi Brahman Inactive Brahman Active Brahman Silence and Activity Ivarallam Edhiradhirana Nilaygalil Vaitthuparkindromo Adhee Poole Machtruri Edhiran Edhiradhirana Nilaygalil Vaitthukum Vaitthuparkum Amssam Andha Being and Non-Being The Being Enral Ellaam Mahavula Uda 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 Udaagiyan Nilay Thedan Being Non-Being Enral Edum Illada Nilay Thedan Non-Being The Non-Being Enbadu Oru Buddhamadu Buddha Madhakotpaadugalil Valuyuruthappadikindradu Ideethan Avargal The Shooniyam Enr Solkindrarakal Angilathil Nihilism Enr Koripadikindrarakal Avargalodiyakotpaadayum Indha Edhiradhirana Nilayak Being and Non-Being Avargalodiyakotpaad Ennavanral Indha Ulahathil Kaanappadum Anithum Irdheyil Andha Non-Being Illada Nilakkidaan Sennrevidum Anithum Shooniyam Adu Thand Unmai Adil Marandhuvidum Enbadu Thand Avargalodiyay Oru Kotpaadu Indha Edhiradhirana Amay Innakotpaadum Oru Indha Kotpaattilum Oru Unmai Illai Enr Thand Bhavan Koripadikindra Indha Bhavan Ennakorukindrar Avvar Irdheyil Onrumillada Nilakkitaan Anithum Sennrevidum Enr Indha Buddhamadhattil Kotpaadugalin Pairil Eduttukondal Vaarvayenbadarkay Oru Ullarandharatham Enbadhe Illamal Poividum Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra In that case life has no intrinsic value Enr Koripadikindra Ahayal The Non-Being Indha Being Ivarirandamey Vande Edhiradhirana Nilayhal Thedayadu Enr Thand Bhavan Koripadikindra Indha Anithame Vande Andha Non-Being Adarkul Marandhuvidum Ellaame Vande Shooniyam Adarkul Marandhuvidum Enginra Oru Nilaypatti Oru Manidhan Eduttukondal Avarudiyavaaarvayrkay Artamirkaadu It has no objective or meaning Enandral There is nothing real that exists Edumay Unmai Illai Enginra Oru Migavum Oru Edhiramariyana Oru Kotpaadu Thand Adi Tharuvidadan Indha Karutha Amindulladu Ahayal Indha Karuthayum Nam Eetrukollamudiyadu Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Enandral Avargal Ennakorunakal Enral Indha Brahman Indha Self Idellam Vande Manadhil Urvaakappatta Oru Ennam Thand Eppadi Namodiyay ego Namol Irkkindradu Oh Adhee Poole Indha Brahman Enbadum Manidhanal Urvaakappatta Oru Ennam Thand Enr Buddhamadhatthinar The Buddhist Philosophy Avvar Thand Korukindradu Avargalodiyakarutha Ennavanral Edumay Illai Ellaame Shooniyam Brahman Enbadum Illai Enbadu Thand Avargalodiyakarutha Adhayum Bhavan Adanodiy Unmai Attra Thamayitthan Bhavan Vilakkakindra Paragraph Six Varikku Indha Karutha Thand Bhavan Indha Karuthakkali Thand Koruvulaa Paragraph Seven Lendha Namipparulapola Life Divine Chapter Four Reality Omnipresent Paragraph Seven But again we find That we are being misled by words Deceived by the transient oppositions of our limited mentality With its fond reliance On verbal distinctions As if They perfectly represented ultimate truths And its rendering of our supplemental experiences In the sense of those intolerant distinctions Non-Being is only a word When we examine the fact it represents We can no longer be sure That absolute non-existence Has any better chance Than the infinite self of being More than an ideative formation of the mind Thank you sir
Thank you, thank you sir, thank you
Can I read sir?
Yes, yes
Explanation Sri Aravindha portrays here the severe limitations of our mind Which tries to bring everything under the rigid formula of our words He says we are being misled by our words Our mind deceives us by creating sharp oppositions between two apparently that is not real differing ideas Our mind being limited has a tendency to rely on verbal distinctions that is contrasts It believes that our words perfectly represent the unlimited ultimate truths It is under the mistaken belief that our supplemental experiences can be conveyed through the verbal distinctions That is Sri Aravindha qualifies them as intolerant Meaning very narrow refusing to accept anything beyond the scope of their definitions In the light of the above we see that non-being is only a word We will come to the conclusion that absolute non-existence has no real basis Buddhist nihilism dismisses the infinite self as only an idea of formation of mind having no reality The absolute non-existence has no better chance either to have any value of reality Thank you sir
Thank you The Distinctions Paagbadaigal Vande Paagbadaigal Nam Manidhanal Urvaakappadikindran Namayeduttukondal Eduttukondal Nam Narayya Paagbadaigali Oru Saadharan Manidhanilailay Avar Eduttukondal Narayya Paagbadaigali Nam Undakkinro Idu Weeru Adu Weeru Idu Onraa Irkindradu Machtrunru Idu Alladathaha Irkindradu Enralam Paagupadutthirum Paagbada Padutthamel Nam Avarvaadu Vande Vaarkikke Oru Avasyam Agindradu Nadeymuray Vaarkikke Indha Paagupadutthudal Paagupadutthipartral Enbadu Oru Nadeymuray Vaarkikke Avasyam Agindradu Avvar Thand Manidhanodiyamanam Varakkappattu Nadeymuray Vaarkiil Vishayangali Kayalakindradu Anal Idu Vande Indha Manidhanodiyay Indha Seyal Enbadu Edai Kaatikindradu Enral Manidhanodiyay Oru Migavum Oru Kuruya Seyalbaatithan Kaatikindradu severe limitations of our mind Paagupadutti Ennakorukindro Onru Paagupadutthikindro Irundavudhu Adi Warthegali Oru Warthegalin Moolamaga Oru Irkyay Kotpaattikul Ivargalay Velipadutthikindro Idu Vande Namay Konja Sendhitthupartal Enral Namodiyay Ulahathai Parkum Namodiyaparvay Adukuritha Nam Enngal Ellaame Evvar Thand Irkindran Enbadu Nam Satri Namay Namay Aarayindhal Arindukollamudiyam Onru Manidhan Moolamaga Manidhanodiyay Oru Kuruya Seyalbaatin Moolamaga Nam Paagupadutthikindro Different Divisions Nam Pakro Onray Veerupadutthi 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 Thand Parkindro Idu Manidhanodiyay Manidhanodiyay Oru Seyalbaadu Adu Matthramalae Warthegalin Moolamaga Adi Oru Irkamana Oru Kotpaattinul Adathadu Adi Velipadutthikindro Idalay Enna Abhitah Bhavaninga Ennakorukindar Enral The Warthegali Moolamagathan Nam Paagbadaigali Arikindro Velipadutthikindro Warthay Andha Warthegalin Warthegal Namay Thavaraaga Vadi Narathikindran Enr Bhavan Koripadikindra Enandral Warthegalavaitthu Thane Onray Arindukolikindro Oru Porulakkupinnal Ulla Unmayatanmai Nam Arivadhe Illai Andha Alavakkam Namakkun Janaam Thedayadu Unmaileye Janaam Enbadu Ennavanral Oru Porulay Knowing it by identity of consciousness Adu Thand उन्मयान अरिव इन्नबद्दद ट्रू नॉलेज इस द नॉलेज बाय आईरेंटिटी ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस अंद न्यानम नमक किटयाद एदो ओन्रे मनदिन मोलमाग अरे कोरया अरिंद्विकुंड अद वार्तेगली वेळिपड़त्ती अंद वार्ते अवर वेळिपड़त्तपड़ुम वार्तेगल नम्ये तवराग वज़ी निरत्तिकिन्द्रन इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्रा वी आर बीइंग मिसलेड बाय आवर वर्ड्स इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्रा नम मनम इन्न सहिकिन्द्रदे नम्ये येमाट्किन्द्रदे इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्रा आवर माइंड डिसीव्ड बाय क्रिएटिंग शार्प ओपोजिशंस बिटवीन तू अपरेंटली डिफरेंट आइडियास तू अपरेंटली डिफरेंट आइडियास इन्नल एन अर्थ उन्मयले ये पार्तोम अब्दीना इरण्ड करुथ्युकलो कोर्टपार्ड़गलो एडुत्त कोण्डाल अडिपड़ेल अदल एदुमय अदले एदर एदरान निलेखल किटयाद अनाल मेयरपुरमाग एदरेदरान निलेखल इरिप्पदु ओर ओर तोटरत्य वेत्तु कुंड नम ओर एदरपय उन्डाकिकिन्द्रो इरण्ड एडंगल इरण्ड कोर्टपार्ड़गल इवेगलुक मत्ती अहियाल दान भगवान इन्न कोरिकिन्द्रा नमुड़े मनम इंद वार्तेगलीन मोलमाग येरपड़त्तपड़ुम डिस्टिंक्शंस वर्बल डिस्टिंक्शंस डिस्टिंक्शंस इन्न्राल वेरिपड़त्तदल इदनाल नमुड़े मनम ओर मुडकपट्टन निलेखल सैयलपडिकिन्द्रदे इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्रा वार्तेगल वंदे नम इन्न नम्बुकिरम इन्न्राल वार्तेगल वंदे ओर अर्थियट्ट उन्मय वेळिपड़त्तिकिन्द्रन इन्त्र नम नम्बुकिन्द्रो अद उन्मयले ये किटयाद वार्तेगलीन मोलमाग एदमय अरिंद्विल्ला मुड़ियाद वार्तेगल ओरलव उब्योगपड़ उब्योगम माग इरिंदालुम कोड उन उन्मयनुड़े मोड़तन्मय ओर अरिया अद वंद अरिंद्विल्ला मुड़बदरके ओरलवे ओरलव दान वार्तेगल उदयपुरिकिन्द्रन इंद मनदे कडंद अनुभवंगल सुप्रमेंटल एक्सपीरियंसेस अदे तेरिविकुम बोरुदे वार्तेगलीन मोलमाग अदे तेरिवित्त अदन मोलमाग अद विलक्कमुड़ियम इन्त्र मनम नम्बुकिन्द्र तवरान नम्बुकील इरिकिन्द्र अहियाल दान भगवान इन्दे इन्न कोरिकिन्द्रा इन्न्राल भगवानिंग कोरकुड़िया वासगम इन्नवन्ड्राल वी आर बीइंग मिसलेड बाय वर्ड्स डिसीव्ड बाय द ट्रांसजेंट ओपोजिशंस ऑफ आवर लिमिटेड मेंटालिटी विथ इट्स फॉन्ड रिलायंस ऑन वर्बल डिस्टिंक्शंस आस इफ दे परफेक्टली रिप्रेसेंटेड अल्टीमेट त्रुथ्स एंड इट्स रेंडरिंग ऑफ आवर सुप्रमेंटल एक्सपीरियंस इन द सेंस ऑफ दोस इंटॉलेंट डिस्टिंक्शंस अब्दीन्र ओर भगवान ओर कडमयान वार्ते विवेकिन्द्रा इंद पागुपार्ड़गल वंदे एप्पडी इरिकिन्द्रन इन्न्राल इंटॉलेंट ओन्र मठ्रन्र ए सहित्त कोल्ला सहित्त कोल्लाद निलेखल कुड़िया वेयरपार्ड़गलाह इरिकिन्द्र अद ओर भगवान वंद ओर वलमयान वार्ते इन्ग उब्यो वेकिन्द्र इन्न कारणम इन्न्राल ओर करुथ इरिकिन्द्रदे अद के एदरान ओर अद के एदरान करुथ तेरिविकुम तेरिविकपड़ुम बोरुदे अद ए मठ्रोर वर एट्रिकुल्ला मुड़िया अंद सहित्त तन्मय अवरके इरिप्पदिल्लै अद मूर्कत्तनमाग अवर एदुकिन्द्र अदलार दान भगवान इंटॉलेंट डिस्टिंक्शंस इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्र इद इल्लामय पार्तोम अब्दीना मनदिनुड़े मनदिनुड़े कोरप मनदिनुड़े मनम अदनुड़े सैयलपार्ड कोरेपट्ट शैयलपार्टीनाल दान सैयलपार्ड़गल निगर्जिकिन्द्रन इद अडिपड़ेल वेत्तु पार्तोम इन्न्राल इंद बुद्ध मद्दा अवरुड़े कोर्टपार्ड दान द नॉन बीइंग निहिलिस्म शून्यम इन्नबद्दद ओर वार्ते दान नॉन बीइंग इस ओन्ली अ वर्ड सच्र भगवानिंग इन्न कोरिकिन्द्रा नम उन्मयले सच्र आरायंदो मानाल एंद अमुडिवुक नम मरुवम इन्न्राल इंद अब्सोल्यूट नॉन एक्सिस्टेंस इन्नबद्दद इन्न इन्नबद्दिल एंद विद उन्मयम किटयाद इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्रा द बुद्धिस निहिलिस्म इन्न सहिकिन्द्रद इन्न्राल अद इंद ब्रह्मन इंद सेल्फ अद यद एट्रिकुल्ला मुड़िया अदे अद वेरुम मनदिनुड़े ओर उर्वाक्कम इन्त्र अद ओढिक्की तर्लिकिन्द्र अब्दीन्राल भगवानिंग इन्न कोरिकिन्द्रा अदय अडिपड़ेल पाक्कपोनाल अवर्गलुड़े वादम दान द अब्सोल्यूट नॉन एक्सिस्टेंस हस नो बेटर चांस एथर तू हैव एनी वैल्यू ऑफ रियलिटी अदय अडिपड़ेल पार्तोम अब्दीना नॉन एक्सिस्टेंस कुम मात्र इन्न ओर अडिपड़े उन्मय इरिकिन्द्रदे अदिलुम उन्मयल्लै इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्र व्हेन वी एग्जामिन डी फैक्ट इट रिप्रेजेंस वी कैन नो लोंगर बी सर डेट अब्सोल्यूट नॉन एक्सिस्टेंस हस एनी बेटर चांस दान द इन्फिनिट सेल्फ ऑफ बीइंग मोर दान एन आइडियेटिव फॉर्मेशन ऑफ डी माइंड भगवान इंद करुथ्यु एट्रिकुल्ला मुड़िया भगवान अवर्गलुड़े वादत तिरके एदरवादमाग वेकिन्द्र अवरुड़े वादम बुद्धिस अवरुड़े वादम इन्नवन्ड्राल अंद इन्फिनिट सेल्फ इन्नबद्दद इल्लै अद वेरुम मनदिनुड़े ओर एन्न उर्वाक्कम दान अदकेन्रय ओर मयमय उन्मय तन्मय किटयाद इन्नबद्दद अवर्गलुड़े वादम भगवान अवर्गलुड़े वादत्य वेत्तु कुंडे अवर भगवान ओर एदरवादमाग सोल्किन्द्र अद उन्मय इल्लै इन्न्राल इदुम उन्मय इल्लै इन्त्र भगवान कोरिपडिकिन्द्र द अब्सोल्यूट नॉन एक्सिस्टेंस हस नो बेटर चांस एथर तू हैव एनी वैल्यू ऑफ रियलिटी अहियाल भगवान इन्न कोरिकिन्द्र इंद पागुपार्ड़गल इल्लामय वार्तेगली वेत्तु कुंड नम उर्वाक्किन्द्रो इन्त्र कोरिकिन्द्र नेक्स्ट पोला नम्बर
वी रियली मीन बाय दिस नथिंग समथिंग बियोंड डी लास्ट टर्म तू विच वी कैन रिड्यूस आवर प्यूरस्ट कन्सेप्शन एंड आवर मोस्ट अब्स्ट्रैक्ट और सटल एक्सपीरियंस ऑफ अक्चुअल बीइंग आस वी नो और कन्सीव इट व्हाइल इन दिस यूनिवर्स दिस नथिंग देम इस मेयरली अ शमथिंग बियोंड पॉजिटिव कन्सेप्शन थैंक यू सर
थैंक यू एक्सप्लेनेशन
पड़िकितिंग लंसन
पड़िक मैडम
आवर प्यूरस्ट कन्सेप्शन इस डी डिवाइन बीइंग आवर एक्सपीरियंस ऑफ डी डिवाइन इस डी मोस्ट अब्स्ट्रैक्ट मीनिंग एक्सिस्टिंग इन थॉट और आस एन आइडिया बट नॉट हैविंग अ फिसिकल और कॉन्क्रीट एक्सपीरियंस वी कन्सीव ऑफ डी डिवाइन आस अ सटल एक्सपीरियंस वी कैन रिड्यूस ऑल डी अबाउट कन्सेप्शंस ऑफ डी डिवाइन इन अ फाइनल टर्म इफ वी कैन डू डेट देन दिस नथिंग और नॉन बीइंग इस टिल शमथिंग बियोंड डी टर्म इट इस शमथिंग बियोंड ऑल पॉजिटिव कन्सेप्शन
थैंक यू थैंक यू
उन्मयले ये नॉन बीइंग असत इन्न्राल इन्न इन्न्राल अद वंद अंद परम्परुलीनुड़े ओर इल्लाम कडंद निलेख दान कोरिकिन्द्र पर डिवाइन पत्ति नम्बर पेसला डिवाइन इन्नबद्दद ओर फिसिकल ऑब्जेक्ट किटयाद अद वंद नमुड़े पुलंगलुक अपार्प्पट्ट विषयमागतान इरिकिन्द्र अद नम स्थूल वड़विल उनर उड़िया वड़ीरुम सूष्मनिलेल अद नम उनर उड़िया अवर इल्लाम से अंद परम्परुले कोरित्त ओर पुरिदले नम अड़या मुड़िया ओर करुथ उर्वाक्कत्ते नम्मल किरुद्याह उर्वाक्क मुड़िया अवर इल्लाम से दालुम कोड इंद परम्परुल डी डिवाइन इन्नबद्दद इद इल्लाम कडंद इरिप्पद इन्न दान नम्मल वंद
or Varthey Vadivam or Karthu Vadivam it is all Kudutal Koda still it is all Kandadiirupadu than and the Supreme and the Divine and the Paramborul it is kurikum solaha inga obiyahupadu the than the non-being or nothing that is the one maya tavi ra the non-being nothing and the one remillada nilai kadeyadu atil than yellaameyirukindradu nothing or non-being in the eday kurikindrumo atil than yellaameyirukindradu in the Bhavan kuripadikindra that is allavidamana oru uridal velakthangal that is allatim thandian nilai than the non-being adhutha pola
A eric tear fiction of nothingness in order to overpass by the method of total exclusion all that we can know unconsciously are actually when we examine closely the nihil of certain philosophies we begin to perceive that it is a zero which is all or an indefinable infinite which appears to the mind a blank because mind grasps only finite constructions but is in fact the only true existence thank you
explanation, thank you
Padikya sir
Padigman
Nothingness is here fiction erected by us by that we overpass and exclude all that we know all that we consciously are the zero of certain nihilist philosophies when examined closely is all or an indefinable infinite the same appears to the mind blank because the mind can grasp only the finite and not the infinite but it is the only true existence the zero covers an immortal face Savitri, Savitri line in the book three la the zero covers an immortal face thank you sir
Thank you, thank you Bhavan the Buddhist avangaludhe and the court part Anithame and the Shunyam it is one the Bhavan it is a ramaga center partal it is one the nammanadinaal uruvakappatta or pooyana thotam in the Bhavan kuripadikindra it is a fiction fiction na inna thao real kadeyadu nothingness in the or fiction namee nama namee erpantikonda or fiction the nothingness in the enna one mayli ennam in the edu allam naam arindado edu allam naam and the
That escapes all mental formula. Pure being, the silent self, is a free base of all cosmic existence. It is nothing but an affirmation by the unknowable of itself. Being is the term used to refer the status of existence of the divine. We must note that the divine has the freedom to be present as existence as well as beyond existence. We give the name non-being which refers to its freedom from all cosmic existence. Being is a positive term of cosmic existence. Non-being is a contrary affirmation of its freedom from all positive terms of actual existence. The fact of the reality exceeding our definition of being is described in the word non-being. It has been wrongly interpreted as that ultimate stage where being is not a non-existence. The consciousness in the universe can formulate to itself some positive terms of actual existence, even from the most abstract and the most transcendent. Yet, the ultimate reality escapes all such formulations. This freedom of not being limited by any expression or all expressions is the essence of non-being. It does not deny any expression of it but exceeds all expression.
Bhagavan Atavadhar mehavam aanithramaha kuru kinnra. The non-being, apriyinkara oru conceptla Indha ennamay ondhe enga edumay ondhe andha oru divine amsam illathudhu enr koorvadhi evodhu thavari enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Bhagavan vandhe, ninnakalam eeindha karthi mindimindam kuru kinnra. Oru mindimindam varvadu bauririkindra deyavur koorakkoorakkarthakal enr allam ninnakalam. Anaal Bhagavan vandhe enna karanathinall kuru kinnra enral Indha karthakal vandhe valuvaga oru sarar manadila vandhe veerunri irundana adu maatharam alla naam vandhe oru unmai inadi sirlamburudhe andha unmai kalai kum marubadaha erkum anithiemi adhanooda karthakal anithiemi oru murumayaha arayindhu dan andha karthakali naam vilakkavendam, adhitthaandi sallavendam. Meembo ka andha karthakali unmai illa enr solvadhi veda. Enna karanathinall andha karthakal la unmai illa enr oru aaramaha arayindu kooravendam. Adhitthaan Bhagavan inge sayikindra, avar vandhe oray warthaila solirikla. The Buddhist, the non-being, ivirgal solvadhi la ala unmai illa, adhal oray warthaila mochirikla. Anaal avar adhmarik kooravillai. Bhagavan enna karanathinall kooravillai enral avar udaya manadila vandhe idha padikkiravang vandhe ellarama arpanda. Oru buddhist kodai the life divine padikilam. Mattravargal oru neutral person in the life divine padikilam. Avargali manadil vayitukundu than Bhagavan idha eridhi ulda. Atavadu mani- ma- 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 Bhagavan manidhanooda arivu enkinder nelekki irankivandhe oru karana kariyathudan idha vilakkainda. Indha oru bukyamana karthi Bhagavan enna kuru kinnra. Edhay naam aariyamudiyadhu enr ninnikinromo, the unknowable. Divine vandhe unknowable than namakka namai poruthavariyakom. Edhay naam aariyamudiyadhu enr ninnikinrom enral, edhuvallam namakku mail oru vyeryan elailirikindru do. Edhuvallam mehavum oru aacharya takka padatakka vaheelirikindru do. Edhuvallam nam warthaygalal vilakkamudiyadhan elailirikindru do. Ennadaan nam munarvin elaili adhi kuritha oru karthi oruvaakinalam adhi ellam adhi kadandheselkinrudo, adhu than unknowable, idhu than, ivar than Bhagavan idhar kana vilakkati tarikindra. Unknowable is something that escapes all mental formula. Unknowable enral manadinaal aariyamudiyadhu. Adhi am purundu kullavendam. Unknowable is something that escapes all mental formula. Adhu than nambodi manam sambandappattai endhavidamana oru kootpadugalinaalum andha paramborulai aariyamudiyadhu. Indha edhay naam inga, indha nothing enr kuru kinnra galoo non-being, nothing enr kuru kinnra galoo adhi edhay sutti kaattikindradhu enral indha unknowable affirmation by the unknowable. Aariyamudiyadha onray than adhu sutti kaattikindradhu. Indha being sat enkinder warthi andha iravanooda iruppi kurikkam oru sollaha painbadikindradhu. Anaal divine vandhe indha iruppu existence enkinder nelekkul maathram kattupattu iruppadillai. Adhi, idhayim, idhayim thaandya elailirikindru. Andha sudandhiram adharka epodu mey undu. Divine has the freedom to be present as existence as well as beyond existence. The non-being enral enna artam enral Bhagavan inge kuri paduvade. Indha divine, andha iravanooda andha purna sudandhiram, ellavidamana prabanjya iruppa kalayim thaandu irukum adhanooda purna sudandritte kuri padum soll than the non-being asat enbadu. Being sat enbadu, oru neermaryana oru soul, indha prabanjya tilinooda, prabanjya til andha iravanooda iruppi kurikkam oru sollaha painbadikindradhu, the being enbadu. Non-being enbadu, idhayellam thaandu irukum adhu purna sudandritte kurikkam moru sollaha, sollaha obiyavapadutha padikindradhu. Non-being enbadu, the being enbadu marukum soll alla, adhitthaan Bhagavan inge kuri padikindra. Ellavidamana velakkangalakum apaarpatthan elai than idhu kuri padikindradhu, enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Indha ultimate reality enbadu ellavidamana kootpadugal, oruvaakungal ellam kadandadhu. Indha sudandhiram, endhavayana oru velakkangal adhey adhayellam minji irukum adhanooda sudandritte kaatrum oru soll than the non-being enbadanooda, andha sollinooda, andha essence of non-being. Adhanooda adipadik tanma edhuvanra, edhay edhay kuri padikindradhu enral. Anithiim kadandu irukum andha iravanooda sudandhiramana nirey than andha non-being enr kuri padikindradhu eviya. The being enbadarkana edhiraana nireyo, oru shuniyamaana nireyo, adhu kuri padhi illai, enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Adutthadu pola.
The non-being permits the being. Even as the silence permits the activity. By this simultaneous negation and affirmation, not mutually destructive but complementary to each other like all contraries. The simultaneous awareness of conscious self-being as the reality and the unknowable beyond as the same reality, as the same reality becomes realizable to the awakened human soul. Thus, was it possible for the Buddha to attain the state of nirvana and yet act poesically in the world, impersonal in his inner consciousness, in his action, the most powerful personality that we know of as having lived and produced results upon earth. Thank you sir.
Thank you, explanation.
Sir, padiktingla?
Nah, padig madam please.
We have seen in the earlier paragraph that silence permits all activity. In the same way, non-being permits being. They are complementary to each other. An awakened human soul can become aware of the conscious self-being as a reality and an unknowable beyond as the same reality simultaneously. Buddha attained nirvana liberation. Yet, his actions created a very powerful impact on the world. He was impersonal, meaning having no personal existence in his inner consciousness. Yet, Sri Aravind says Buddha lived as a powerful personality producing great results upon the world. Buddha's inner liberation could permit all outer activities. Thank you sir.
Thank you. Idhala Bhagavan vandhe oru ushetha vandhe kuru kinnra. Enna kuru kinnra enral? The buddhism enna kuru kinnradhu enral? Buddhism andha as a religion. Buddhism as a principle. Adhum buddharu daya sailbadum parthobdina oru muranaan nirey kindradhu, adhitthaan Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Indha non-being enbadu asat enbadu ell- ellavidamana anitha amaypugaliyim adhu, amaypukkum adhu anumadiyalikindradhu, non-being permits being. Adhi edhiraan amaypukkada yadhu one matronraya adharikum amaypahataan non-being and being, we erindamey irikindran. Oru manidhan, oru vidi puttra manidhanooda aanma vandhe indha irandanelai galime oray samayathil anubhur anubhurumaga unaramudiyum enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Bhagavan enna kuru kinnra? The simultaneous awareness of conscious self-being as a reality. The simultaneous awareness of conscious self-being as a reality and the unknowable beyond as the same reality becomes real- realizable to the awakened human soul, apriyinkara. Oru human soul vandhe the unknowable vandhe, andha nelekke sendraparagu, adhu onremiladha nelekke nirey aettuvada. Adhey samayathila adhukvandhe oru simultaneous awarenessirukku of conscious self-being, apriyinkara. Ellam kadandhan nirey kesendhalam kodai andha vidi puttraanma oru sailbadum nirey lirikakoodiya nireyilum, adhu the irandanelai galam vandhe oray samayathila, adhar, intha irandanelai galam oray samayathila adhar kusaththiam enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Idhar kuh Bhagavan edutthikaataha buddharu inooda andha andha mukti. Buddhar vandhe nirvana, nirvana mukti enbadu etti enra. Avar etti pinba, pinnarum kodai oru sailetra nireyilavur irunduvadu illai. Naamay parkindrum buddhamadam vandhe ulagathil vandhe adhi edathil paravya oru valuvana kootpadugalai konda madamaha thigazikindradhu. Indha bhag- buddhar vandhe andha nirvana enkinder avar anubhuti ettiyapinnarum kodai avar summa irkavillai. Avar udaya sailbadugal vandhe mehavum oru valuma, oru valuvana thakka tay, andha ulagathinmeedhu, adhu undakiyadhu. Avar udaya aha nireyil, inner consciousness la vandhe oru impersonalai irunda. Namam, namay kerdipadikindrum, avar udaya aha nireyil, in his inner consciousness, he was impersonal. Edhayim saandhiradan nireyil irundhar, irundharum parthobdina avar vandhe oru powerful personality apriyinkara Bhagavan. Bhagavan vandhe buddharipattik kuri padumbo, buddhar vandhe compliment pantara. Avar udai kootpadugalai Bhagavan ettrukalda vidhalum kodai. Bukhavan, Bhagavan compliments Buddha as a personality, epde kuru kinnra enral. Buddharipatti Bhagavan ivarikimburudhe in his action, the most powerful personality that we know of as having lived and produced results upon earth, enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Indha ulagathil vaanadwarakalil mehavum oru sakthi vaayindha oru aalumi kondavara, kondavargalaha irupparil, irupparidhan vandhe buddhar. Avar vaarum kalathila pathamna avar udaya bhoomiila vandhe, ulagathil vandhe avar undakiyavilevagal vandhe oru periyalaval irundana, enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Ahayala Bhagavan, ning enna Bhagavan koorav- kuru kinnra enral? Indha inaction and action enbadu onray onr ah onray onr saandhu than irikindradhu eviya oru vyervana nirey ettiyudan, ulagathinooda sailbadugalilirundu vilahi kolavendam enkinder, avasiam illai. Enbadu buddharinooda oru vaarkay parthale, naam munarikindrum enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Buddhar vandha the liberation mukti ettiyudan avar summa irkavillai, adhittha, pinbu avar udaya sailbadu than ulagathil oru valuvana thakka tay ayipaduthiyadhu. Ah, idhu kuritha Bhagavan veeru edathilum buddharipattik kuru kinnra. Buddhar vandha andha almost when he was reaching andha nirey, andha nirey, andha mukti, andha nirey kisendra udon Bhagavan inge enna kuru kinnra, andha nirey sendu udon buddhar andha nirey maruthivadikindra enr Bhagavan kuri kinnra. Andha nirey enna, enna karanathinall maruthivadikindra enral? Indha ulagathil kadesi manidhan thumbangalilirundu vedupadum marai naan indha mukti naadamattan enr buddhar andha nirey maruthivittara enr veeru edathil Sri Aravind kuri padikindra, life divine le varikindradhu. Ahayala buddharay vandhe, buddhamadam vandhe anithirkkum adipadayala vandhe, ellam kadandhan nireyil vandhe shuniyam than irikindradhu. Onremiladha nireyil irikindradhu enr kuri naalum kodai. Buddhar udaya sailgal vandha var illai. Adhu mehavu ulagathil mehavum valumayana thakka tay, maatra tay, mundu, undu panniyadhu enr Bhagavan. Buddharipattik vyervaha kuru kinnra. Meelum annayinooda prarthaygalum janangalilum parthobdina Sakyamuni enr bhagha annay kuri kinnrakal. Buddharinooda andha vision, annay kikadik, kikadikindradhu. Andha devi aanbhai, avar kulleya vayitukollamal the ulagathil anivarakum kitumbadi sayavendam, adhu than and naan edukindrapani enr buddhar aaneduvadu boal avar kundu oru vision thodunkindradhu enradhu. The prayers and meditation la varikindradhu. Sakyamuni enr annay kuri padikindrakal. Paragraph ten pola.
Paragraph ten. When we ponder on these things, we begin to perceive how feeble in their self-assertive violence and how confusing in their misleading distinctness are the words that we use. We begin also to perceive that the limitations we impose on the Brahman arise from a narrowness of experience in the individual mind which concentrates itself on one aspect of the unknowable and proceeds forthwith to deny or disparage all the rest.
Thank you, thank you, explanation, explanation.
Yes sir.
Yes plus, please.
Sri Aravind again highlights the inadequacy of the words in conveying the truth. Though with limited scope of expression, our words tend to exhibit self-assertive violence. It means we forcibly convey through our words the impression that we are right and others are wrong. Our words in trying to explain a thing or a phenomenon make it look distinct or different from the other. Such distinctions are often misleading. We face the same problem when we try to describe Brahman by our words. This happens because of the narrowness of our experience by our individual mind. Our mind always concentrates itself on one aspect of the unknowable. Holding on to this one aspect, it vehemently rejects all the others. This is the defect of the human mind. Thank you sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Meanwhile, andha buddharipatti kuri padumburudhe annay, mother enna kuri padikindrakal enral? The buddhamadathila vandhe meriyapirivagal thondivittuna buddhar vandhe buddhamadathai oruvaakavendam enr avar sailbadavilla. Oru madathai oruvaakavendam enro oru oru iyakthi undakavendam enro avar sailbadavilla. Anaal adhar kappinna vandha avar udaya seederkal avargalin mulamaha neriyapirivagal undaayana idhukthaan manay kuri kinnrakal buddharay tapodhu vandhe vandha, vandha avar ke vandhe itthakaya buddhamadathinooda andha kootpadugal vandha avar ke vilangada enr annay nagachuvaak kuri kinnrakal. Enndral buddhar, Christ, andha avadarangal ellam madathai oruvaakavendam enr avargal thodniyavillai. Adhar avar udaya seederkal, avargal, avar udaya variyapinbatugal than pinnal oru madathai oruvaaki, adhil neriyavairbadugalai undakiyulakal. Idha naam oru, andha karthi annay, annayal koorapattuladhu. Ingabhavan, ingenna kuru kinnra enral? The warthaygal than egayen, egayen, the warthaygal vandhe evaari ah oru karthi vandhe oru su- kurukya vattathirkul karthi terivithu, adhalai gattiyaha vidapidiyaha piditukundu. Adhar ke edhiraal avunla karthakalai vanmayaha edhirkindranay enkinder Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Self-assertive violence enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Narey vairadha dargavadam solvanga. Idhella may vandho oru self-assertive violence. Warthaygalai, warthaygalai vandhe nambapakaro, adhu vandho oru limited scope of expression na warthaygal. Adhin warthaygalin mulamaha oru unmai terivikkevay mudiyadhu. Anaal andha warthay gattiyaha piditukundu onray, naam ninnakum onray nalasariyadhu enrum, matronraya sariyadhu alla enrum, oru vanmayaha naam vidapidiyaha adhil irikindrum. Idhu vandhe, it's such distinctions are often misleading apriyinkara Bhagavan. Namay thavaraana varinadathu vayyapriyinkara. Indhe, idhe pokka than naam, andha paramborulai kuri thut, brahmani kuri thut, vilakkumborudum kayalakindrum. The brahmaninooda, namodha anubhatin mulamaha oru anubhatte, oru kuri padha anubhatte, namodha manam adakhindradhu. Andha manam, andha anubhatte maathiramme adhil maathiramme, adhu thane orumanipaditukundu, on aspect of the unknowable, adhi maathram medutukundu. Adhu than Brahman enr oru vidapidiyaha, vidapidiyaha vaadikindradhu. Matravagal, matravargal, matra karthakal, matra aspects, adhey adhu vanmayaha maruthu odhikindradhu, idhu vandhe, it's a defect of the human mind apriyinkara. Enna Brahman enbadu warthaygalal adhi vilakkavey mudiyadhu. Adhanooda oru aspect maathram medutukundu, idhu than unmai enr oru vidapidiyaha oru karthi patrickundiruppadu. It is a defect of the human mind enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Manidhanooda, manadhanooda oru kuraybadu enr Bhagavan kuri padikindra. Adutthadu pola.
Rangarajan sir, one on one salaama sir?
Yes, please.
Mother vandhe sir, aarti 957 oru varsham continuousa playgroundla evening five to six vandhe Dhammapada apinjilutu buddharu da kootpadugalai varikaradha eduthinde nihar puudamaha ambathrundu varangalakku explanation koduthirka sir. Adhu tanay oru kustavamaha ve vandhirke, remba remba interestinga arukam sir, Dhammapada commentary.
Yes, 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 commentary on Dhammapada.
Oru varsham complete ambathrundu.
Yes, yes.
Remba nalarko sir.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Sir, adhu complete tops of mother la adhu irkiliya, andha volume nu salaama?
Connected, connected volumes la irkada.
Amma?
Ah, endha volumes nu na salaama? Mother took classes on Dhammapada.
Sir, adhu volume three, CWM three.
Questions and, questions and answers la irk. Nineteen twenty nine, nineteen twenty eight thirty, andha volume, volume three.
Okay, thank you.
Adhu than mother vandhe first, first peesnada. Andha volume.
Four.
Ah, volume four, yes.
Four volume.
Praavanga, mother vandhe adutha varsham, adhukadutha varsham apinjilutu ah, thoughts and affections by Sri Aravind, adha adhuthinde idupannaanga. Adhey modhi, mother aprinjigutu, mother, Aravindare vinnanade, adhayum, mother vandhe andha evening idhila vandhu oru, three years continuousa, mother vandhe, five to six playgroundla peesnangan vandhe vandhirke sir.
Yes sir, yes sir, thatla golden period of Ashram, thatla, golden period.
Thank, thank you sir.
Thank you. Next poem.
We tend always to translate too rigidly what we can conceive or know of the absolute into the terms of our own particular relativity. We affirm the one and identical by passionately discriminating and asserting the egoism of our own opinions and partial experiences against the opinions and partial experiences of others.
Thank you, thank you, explanation.
Padikittama sir?
Ah, yes madam.
Each one has a different perception of things. It is purely relative to his way of looking at things. We conceive of the absolute into the terms of our own particular relativity. This means the views change from person to person. The Brahman is one without a second and identical. It is the same for all. While affirming the Brahman, we discriminate it with passion against the perception of others. We assert the egoism of our opinions and our partial experiences against the opinions and partial experiences of others. Thank you sir.
Thank you. Enna karanathinall evodhu kootpadugal philosophical systems neriyapirivani gal vandhirke, ilia? Ellamadathila vandhirke? Ellavariyilim vandhirke, neriyadha pirivani gal, kootpadugal ah, philosophical systems, tatvaridhaan amaypugalna neriyavandhirke. Ayala onna thavari illai. Enna overvarum over aspecta kuri kinnrakal. Enga prachinavaru dabdinna? Avargal aarindha andha unmai, adhu onrudhan unmai, mattravargal kandha unmai, unmai alla enr oru vanmayaha vaadivadhu, adhu than prachinayanga. Adhu vandhe, edhan adipadayala varu oruvaru, idhu than madangal oruvaaha adipadaya irikindran. Vevayapirivani gal, oray amaypargal kulapathobdina, neriyapirivani gal parkindrum. Neriyapirivani galai naam parkindru, andha pirivani gal ellam, edhanan. Then I air put the the in the The car and at the now Dan air put the Or a amset the edit Thikondu and the amsam Dan On my Matra Varkhanam Vero Ram Sam on my allah in the Or a one may ahah Or a Pidivada Mana nailayla irupad Adipadae on my in a marindu Kulla eventum The Brahman in both the one day At the wear Budva the Noor bear noor Vichy noor Vidamahah At the part Thalum code on the Brahman in both the one day At the La Maatramay Kadeya Iranda the it is identical Brahman one day Veverahah to on the The la or a mother yahah than to on the Other on the tanmi Maruva the Anan naam in a say in room Over overum Brahman a Our our Galakut Tagundamari Unarikindra The perception changes Anal Namor de and the ego At the Adipadae il Naam ever Unarikindra mo at the Dan on my Bhavan in a core again there We affirm the one and identical by passionately discriminating Passionating and not a or a very drama Under the passionately discriminating And asserting the egoism of our own opinions And partial experiences Namak Kedek the la one day or a Muzumian anubomak Kadeya Namak Kedek Chora Arakorayan anuboyth Vithikondu Matra Varkhal come a the a mother on the Our girl run our girl Odon naam pora Dikin room We Affirm the one and identical by passionately discriminating and asserting the egoism Of our own opinions And partial experiences against The opinions and partial experiences of others and the Bhavan who is putting in there It is one day Car and Vever period Vani Gal Air put the the it is the Adipadae car and Amaha irikindra the In the Bhavan who is putting in there Add a the Paul on the It is wiser to wait To learn To grow And since we are obliged for the sake of our Self perfection To speak of these things Which no human speech can express To search for the widest The most flexible The most Catholic affirmation Possible And found on it the largest And most comprehensive harmony Thank you explanation
So now parikita ma?
Yes.
Why do we seek of the Brahman? The Divine Reality It is for the sake of our self perfection While doing so, we must have it in mind That we try to seek of things which no human speech could express We must search for the widest The most flexible and the most Catholic affirmation possible We must found on it the Largest and most comprehensive Harmony It cannot be done on narrowness Which will only promote division and disharmony Hence Sri or a window advises us To wait Not to be hasty In our affirmation To learn Not to act on our inadequate knowledge To grow Not to have a limited view of things But to have an All encompassing consciousness
Thank you, thank you. It is one the Bhavan in order yeah Number Spirituality could a core it the Anukumari lae na park in room Annyeum Bhavan um one day Yet he may vary or at the core of illai The do's and don'ts In the one day Kadeya Our our Galak Etramari Dan Bovan room Thanahve Tirmani Kappadi Kindra the In a car and at the Annyeum Bhavan um or Puduvana Niyadi Gal in the Vahkavili in there And the Niyadi Gal Vaitikondu or a madam ahah Akki Viva End of car and at the now Dan Our la bar ahah Kavili In the Bhavan in a core again there Naam in the Maru Yer Vichy Engli Pacey in room The Yer Vichy Engli in the car in a car and at the Pacey in room in the Namipodumay Marakka Koda It is all one day verro or Knowledge for knowledge sake Kadeya the It is one day namor namor de a or So yeah Moon netter trickah so yeah Purnathuthir Kaagat Dan in the Vichy Engli Patric Pacey in room For the sake of our own self perfection, we speak of the divine It is a car and the Here a Vichy Engli Patric Pacey in room in there Naam on the or a Muzumay Tanmi Adewa the Kaagat Dan it is all my Pacey in room It is Adipadae la It is in a Marandhi Vada Koda Ah bar sayyim board the Naam yeti manadil Kolla event in the Yeti Ariya are in the Kevi and the Naam yeti core it the Pacey in room ahah at the namor de Vartegal Like la aparta or a Vichy at the core it the Pacey in room in the Or a namor de a or Ah or Yelimay Odon Or a Adakka Thodan Pacey eventum In and all naam yeti core it the Pacey talum ahah at the naal Vela Kame Diya Appriere Karama number one day or a authoritative Divine core it the Pacey Muriya the in the Bhavan who is putting in there In and all yena Dana Pacey talo At the allam kandan there could a Vichyam Dan and the Divine in the And I in the in the on my woodan Dan naam in the Vichy Engli Pacey eventum In the Bhavan who is putting in there Irundhalum Pacey ve Vehndiya nailayla ever Pacey event in the Or a Visalamana Parva Yoda Pacey eventum or a Yelihya Tanmi Odon Pacey eventum Anitim Therveya or a Anukumari Odon Dan Pacey eventum aodye or a Kuruya Can not at the Odon oh Anukumari Odon oh In the here even here is a Manda Patta Vichy Engli Naam Anukam Muriya the in the Bhavan who is putting in there We must search for the widest The most flexible and the most Catholic affirmation possible abdingra At the Adipadae la Dan namalavandu or a Otte Saywana or a Visalamana or a Otte Saywana or a Amaype air put the Mudiya On the narrowness one day Or a Kuruya Adipadae la part of Medina Division and disarm and a Dan on the Ah division and disarm and you on the manadana key Adipadae ahah irupad At the in the Anmika Vichy Engli La Ulan Orangeram abdingra Yeah Anmika Vichy Engli La Division Disarm and here could Dan are could the Marakya Muriya In the Amaype Dithita La the Division and disarm and here could In a car and manai this is the car and It is in a Marindu Kavili In the Bhavan who is putting in there I have a lot Bhavan in a core again there Namavandu or a Avasara Padak Koda One ray naam Urudiyahah naam So Coorum board the Avasara Pattku or Akkoda the Bigra not to be hasty in our affirmation At the pole Nyanam one day Purnamahah Purnamana Nyanat In Adipadae la Dan naam Sailor Vada Are a hurry Nyanat in Piri Sailor Vada Koda At the pole namor de Parva one day or a Visalamana Parva At the Adipadae la Anitim Therveya Unarvini It is an Adipadae la Dan nam Sailor Vada Vehndi Vehndi Metta the Raarehore Yana or a Parva in Adipadae Nam Sailor Vada Koda Especially The Anmika Riedhaan Vichy Engli Anukum board the in the Bhavan who is putting in there
Catholic affirmation and a sir Catholic affirmation
Catholic Catholic in the Varteg Bhavan Adikadi Use a Catholic in the Number in a in a Kedro The Christian Catholic in the name Immediately at a namak At the Dan manadil At the Dan manadil Varekindra the Catholic in the Anglia Solu Kenna on myana Artam in the Anitim Therveya the Abdi Nartho Anitim Therveya the Catholic Katha Catholic City Abdi Na Naartha Vina Yella car the Galley um Therveya the Yeti am Vela Kamal Anitim Therveya the That is Dan Catholic City Catholic City Catholic At the La Run Da Ah sold on Catholic in the At the Christians Col Solaga the Nam Aden Odon Neenyati Park in room Anala the Anglia Varteg in the or a Ratham
Here could okay okay thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Where the um Car the eleven session a model